Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Well, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to our first lengthy council meeting. No, it's going to be a fast council meeting of the new year. It's always good to see you. Tonight I get to offer the invocation, and then, following the invocation, Madison Ma, who's a senior at Bakersfield Christian High School, will lead us in the pledge. Madison is the distinguished young woman of Bakersfield, class of 2025. She's president of the National Honor Society and Medical Club, member of the BCHS Honors Academy, and a recipient of the AP Scholar with Distinction Recognition and U.S. President's Award for Educational Excellence. And if that is not enough, she's a member of the Bakersfield Youth Symphony, where she plays the French horn, one of the most difficult instruments. She's the first horn player for the Kern County Honor Bands and Orchestra and a member of the California All-State Honor Ensemble. She aspires to work in the medical field, doctor, pursuing a pre-medical degree, and plans to stay in California for college. Then she's coming back to Bakersfield. Is that not right? Yes. Thank you so much, Carol File, advisor of distinguished young women, for being here, and her mom, and she'll get to introduce them when we're finished. Would you all please stand? Heavenly Father, thank you for this new year, and we thank you that we can celebrate your goodness, your goodness to our families, your goodness to our community, your goodness to our country. And thank you that we can recognize, after singing this many times during the holiday season, that the government is not on our shoulders. And so, we look to you for that wisdom. Your word tells us that if we lack wisdom, we ask of God, who gives wisdom freely. And so, that is what we do this evening. We ask you for that divine wisdom. Give us insights into solutions for those problems that plague our city, those things that we're not able to solve. We just ask that you would give us those divine solutions. And we just pray that this year would be one of much economic prosperity for all. Would you give us insights into being able to stimulate our economy, have economic development here in our community, and may this be that community that it was destined to be? Tonight, we remember our brothers and sisters who are impacted by fire, and we just pray for their safety. We pray for their protection. And for all of those who are assisting, our first responders, we just pray for their safety also. May you give great wisdom to all of those who are attempting to assist those impacted by fire. And we just welcome our new council members. We pray for great wisdom for them, and we thank you for their election and also the reelection of our council member Gonzalez. Thank you again for all that you are doing for this community and will continue to do, and we ask this in the strong and precious name. Amen. And now, our flag salute.
Thank you, Mary Go.
I forgot roll call. Oh, without, that was a bad start, but we'll do the pledge and then we'll do roll call.
Okay. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Madison. And would you just like to introduce your mom and Carol?
Yes.
And then we'll do roll.
First, I want to say thank you for inviting me for this opportunity, and thank you distinguished young woman as well. My mom is sitting right there. Her name is Chrissy, and then this is the Communications Administrator for Distinguished Young Woman, Carol File.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations on your many, many, many accomplishments. And now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Here.
Thank you. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Public statements, in keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I'll call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or, in a matter, not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total, for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call on you at a later time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in, one at a time, to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mary Go, we've received four public speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Zach Griffin, followed by Julie Gutierrez, followed by Alyssa Reed, followed by Terry Maxwell.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Griffin, if you will come up and introduce yourself, and to all of you, if you just remember to adjust the level of the microphone, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, constituents. My name is Zachary Griffin. I'm a local cycling advocate as well as a special education teacher. I've come before the board. We have new members, just to remind ourselves, and again, let me back up. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope you had a great holiday season. Unfortunately, in my job as a special education teacher, we have to go through this process of constantly reflecting. And I want to remind our board, our council, as well as our staff, that unfortunately this year, we surpassed our previous record year of pedestrian fatalities. According to KGET's latest conversation, I spoke with them yesterday, we had 57 fatalities confirmed with the mortuary, or the morgue, excuse me, and that beats our record of 56 last year. As a reminder, in 2009, when myself and Councilman Smith attended a California Public Health Symposium here in Kern County in regards to our outrageous combined cycling and pedestrian deaths of 26, we have far surpassed that. And I know we've done good work, and I want to praise and congratulate the council on doing the good work and the staff on putting the good work. However, I will be honest with you, if I have 90% of my students failing in my class despite all of my good work, I'm not doing my job. With that, I would like us to again reflect. I know we have some pretty good work done in our subcommittees, and I would like us to continue to go forward and continue to look at improving that. One of the thoughts that I have within my last 20 seconds here is that I understand making cultural change sometimes is policy-driven, but people don't, people didn't come to rock and roll, or they don't come to fashion because somebody shows them a sign. It's a culturally-driven thing, and we have to look at our young people and be able to engage them. That six-year-old in 10 years is going to be a driver. That's how we're going to change this culture. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful year.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next speaker, please.
Julie Gutierrez.
I'm sorry, Mary. I wanted to comment on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Go ahead. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
I'm not seeing that at, okay, now I am.
Yeah, no, I was slow. I'm sorry. I just wanted to follow up on that comment, and I think those numbers are county-wide. Yeah, but I do like to get updates, and so, if we could get the annual numbers at the next council meeting from the police department, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, city councilmembers. My name is Julia Gutierrez. I'm a lifelong resident of California, born and raised in Bakersfield, and I'm pursuing a master's degree in fine arts. For 27 years, I've watched our town grow and expand with new businesses, homes, and schools being built over acres of what used to be dirt. Independence High School was lonesome for a time, but then, or but now, the Career and Technical Education Center has brought not only new buildings, but new opportunities and pathways for students to further their education and enhance their abilities with programs in fields of medicine, business, and much more. However, I've also seen what used to be busy areas become deserted, lifeless, empty buildings that have been the sites of many structure fires in recent times. I'd like to share a project plan that I've put together to decrease the increasing number of vacant building fires, bring economic stability back to local businesses, and create a place for artists to rent for a reasonable fee where they can store their works, have plenty of space, and be able to work with other local artists of all ages. Some buildings of interest included in my plan are commercial buildings that have been vacant for at least one year, while others have caught my eye when driving around town, such as the old Tina Marie's Cafe at 1416 20th Street, a commercial building at 2001 Chester Avenue that is for sale with contact information, and 1918 19th Street, 1810 Chester Avenue. And I've considered working with the owners of the Hopkins Building to put to use the second and third floors for rent. Any apartment or motels like the Manila Inn would prove best as individuals and their, for individuals and their works. They all have different techniques and the ability to control AC for an artist. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize the time, but yeah.
You can go ahead and just do a closing sentence if you would like.
I have more for this project plan, including blueprints, cost estimates, locations, and other ideas, some of which involve a program to help rehabilitate the kids in juvenile detention and improve the community. I'd like the opportunity to discuss these matters with you in greater detail within a timely manner.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Gutierrez, thank you so much for coming to council with some solutions and for identifying an important problem, an issue that I actually care deeply about and something that I've been working with my colleagues on for quite some time, along with city staff. You're right, there are a number of vacant buildings, underutilized properties, particularly in the downtown core, and we have to do more. And one of the pieces that we've already put in place is the Chronic Nuisance Property Toolkit. We've also created a registry requirement for any vacant buildings, and so, those are steps in the right direction towards where you're headed. But I share the same vision as you, and I would love to learn more about your plans. So, after this, I'm going to reach out to you, and hopefully, we can grab a cup of coffee and have a conversation about where we can lead forward. But I will tell you, Tina Marie's is coming back, so that building will be occupied and will be a restaurant. 2001 Chester, we're still working on plans there. 1918 19th Street will be a chiropractic office, actually, in the next couple of months. So, there's a lot of movement still in downtown Bakersfield and a lot of great redevelopment work, so we'd love to have you part of our movement. Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. Next speaker, please.
Alyssa Reed.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Alyssa Reed, and I'm the Executive Secretary of the Kern, Enyon, Mono Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. What I'd like to share with you this afternoon is some information about our apprenticeship readiness program that our council runs. Our apprenticeship readiness program is a 10-week program designed to introduce individuals to trade apprenticeships, and we run a 10-week program that shares with them what different trades do, what apprenticeship is, and how to get into an apprenticeship program. And through that, they're able to get connected with a career path that provides good, stable employment with living wages and good benefits and retirement plans and all those great things that we talk about when we talk about workforce development. Our program has been extremely successful. We've been running for three years. Our overall placement rate is 80%, so everyone coming out of our program, 80% of those folks are finding good, high-paid, livable-wage jobs. And so, I wanted to share with you a little bit about our program, and our State Building and Construction Trades Council does a newsletter, and in December, their issue was focused on MC3 apprenticeship readiness programs, so I wanted to share the issue with you. Our program is in there, so I brought copies for everyone. The first page will give you a little bit of an overview about what apprenticeship readiness really is and what the curriculum is, and then, on page 25, you'll find information about the Kern program, the program that we run and that we're continuing to run. And it just connects people with a career path, and that's what our goal is to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We really do need more trades apprenticeships here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that new? Cancel? Okay. All right. Vice Mayor, then we'll go to Councilmember Gonzalez. I, no, I think it's stuck here. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Reed, thank you so much for coming. I want to say I've had an opportunity to watch the MC3 program firsthand, both during the training and also at some of the graduation celebrations, and have been very inspired to see the opportunities given to so many people to advance in their lives, not only just careers, but really improve their economic well-being for themselves and for their families. And so, what you're doing is the right work, in my opinion. It's something that we, at the City of Bakersfield, ought to support. But it also brings me to some thoughts about some of the investments we're making in some of our public works projects. For example, in southeast Bakersfield, through southeast Strong, through several state and federal grants and some local dollars, over the next few years, we'll be investing over $100 million in southeast Bakersfield, which is obviously a historically disadvantaged neighborhood, and this investment will be historic. But while the public works projects are welcome investment, we do have to ask ourselves the basic question of who will benefit economically from the actual work, from the work of the projects? How will we work to ensure, as a city, that the local residents, the people within the neighborhood, will have the opportunity to benefit from that work? I believe, and I know many of my colleagues here believe, that the residents should benefit from those contracts, from the subcontracts, from many jobs that are generated, from many vendor opportunities. And you know, in many places, in many cities, they have a local hiring ordinance. For example, in Cincinnati, they have an ordinance that requires contractors on city projects to hire 30% to 40% of their workforce from local residents, with at least 20% of all those residents being from disadvantaged communities. And so, I want to make a referral tonight to staff that we begin working on a local hire ordinance in the City of Bakersfield to develop a set of standards for the outreach, recruitment, training, and hiring of local residents, especially those who live in disadvantaged communities, and that we include also a strategy for us to support the training, similar to MC3, so that we can prepare our residents in southeast Bakersfield for these jobs, not only today in these contracts, but also in the future. And then, I'm also asking that we develop a strategy to build and help build the capacity of locally-owned, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned businesses to become contractors, subcontractors, and vendors that submit competitive bids and are actually successful. So, we need to provide some scaffolding, for lack of a better term, for some of our locally-owned businesses so that they can actually compete and have a fighting chance to win some of these contracts and awards. And then, finally, my ask is that we develop a schedule that we come back and, through an annual report to this council, really analyze our progress in these areas. So, thank you again for all the work that you're doing. I'm hoping that this city council and this city can be a partner in the years to come, particularly given all this new investment that we're making in years ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alyssa, for joining us today to share this good news. I too have the honor with Councilmember Arias and Councilmember Gonzalez to attend two of the graduations out of three so far, and one, I just want to share how cool, like, out of the San Francisco area, Sisters with Tools, that is so neat, and just seeing the faces of some of the graduates, I think, is worth featuring as well. When you listen to the stories of some of the individuals and the graduates at the graduations, it's really such a diverse group of students that come through. You have folks who have served their time in the Army. I remember meeting someone who was in the Navy. And, quick story, when I was getting my phone fixed at Verizon, actually, the employee who was helping me was getting ready to go through a training program as well, and I told him about this program. He might have gone to IBW, but regardless, I think that just goes to show you, individuals who are already in the workforce see how livable jobs and jobs with dignity provide them the opportunity to access equality of life that we want all of our residents here in the City of Bakersfield to have. And so, those were two recent encounters, but it's just so lovely to come and join those families, the graduates or children, and it's just really nice to see that there's folks from all walks of life, intergenerational. So, thank you for the work that you all do in building our local workforce.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next speaker, please.
Terry Maxwell.
I'd like to overhead. Is that good? Then I have these for the councilmembers or the city manager and the city attorney. I'm not started yet.
Nope.
Already started.
They're going to fix, they'll fix it.
Hopefully, I can get this done in two minutes.
Welcome.
And the first thing I want to do is point out that I'm glad we've got some new city councilmembers. We're still waiting on 24th Street to get some of the things that were promised done on 24th Street done. There's only one real way to get into 24th Street if you're headed in the east direction because they took out the roundabout that took you back to 23rd Street. I'd like to know why, over a year and a half later, we still have that blocked off. But more importantly, what I'm handing you is information, which I'm not really going to go over. I don't know who came up with the idea of making H Street one lane in both directions from the Golden State Freeway, or Golden State, all the way out to Brundage, but that's an asinine idea. I just can't believe that you think that that's going to create less traffic and have less problems. Here's a solution to what you want to do, and this is a circular pattern of one-way streets. If you look at this, F Street would become four lanes, H Street, three, 17th and 18th would become four lanes, L Street would become four lanes, and M Street would become three lanes in one direction. And for you, Councilmember Smith, you'd have enough room for bicycle lanes on all those also. You would eliminate the left-hand turn lanes at 24th and 23rd Street and F. The triangle I have there is the three-way stoplight that you have at 21st and F. That would be eliminated. You have a left-hand turn lane at H, excuse me, L Street, coming from L, trying to take a left-hand turn onto 24th. This circular pattern solves a lot of your problems. You'll have a lot less congestion, which is, of course, for the Air Resources Board, would make them extremely happy, extremely happy. And I just think that this is something you should consider, rather than doing something as ridiculous as making H Street, which is a major thoroughfare from the downtown area all the way to the south of Bakersfield. It goes for a long ways, and making it one lane would be not a very good idea. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, is this another one? Okay, next, we'll go back then to the non-agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the speaker that we just received the card.
Jess Sanders.
Please introduce yourself.
Jesse Sanders. I'm calling about the, or talking about the street one lane. I think that's going to be a massive congestion problem. If you need more bike space, create more bike space, but don't make the cars more dangerous for the bikes by crowding it in there and putting bike lane in. The other thing is, Bakersfield has not got the climate for biking everywhere. I personally can't bike because of knee injuries, but those people that have work, I used to run a truck. There's no way I could carry my tools on that truck on a bike. So, I think pushing for a bike lane for a few people that want to get out and exercise and do their thing at the expense of actual logical transportation, I think it's a silly move and a wasteful move. And I'm wondering what happens when skateboarders want more of the share of the road? Do they cut the bike lane out or another car lane? How far do we go in the interest of a few that might be on the board to push for bikes? The other thing is, how are you paying for that? Gas tax? Property tax? People that want the more bike lanes, put a tax on the bike. Write more tickets because they're some of the biggest violators of running stop signs, using the crosswalks when they shouldn't be. If they're a vehicle, they shouldn't be in the crosswalk, or they cut onto the sidewalk. All of those could be violations, and the ticket, a portion of it, could go for paying for these extra things. So, just would like some common sense in this.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Madam Clerk, do we have any other for non-agenda?
That was our final speaker regarding non-agenda items.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, items 6A through D, or items listed under consent calendar, item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on appointments, items 6A through D?
Mary Go, we've received...
Or, or calendar, consent calendar, item 7.
Mary Go, we've received one speaker card from Terry Maxwell regarding items 6B and 6C.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Terry Maxwell, and you're going to be appointing onto the Planning Commission as well as onto the Safety Commission a couple of people that I think should be looked at a little bit closely. First of all, one is Matthew Martin. He is currently a chief of staff for Jeff Flores in the county. I see a conflict of interest when somebody is so ingrained into what goes on over in the county that they would be on our planning commission for the city. I think that's a very poor move. In addition to that, he is named in two FPPC violation investigations, one from 2022. The case number is 01054, and the most recent one is in 2024 in the primary election, and that is, the case number of that is 2024-003. I didn't think I'd forget this. Three, I think, 53. But those violations are serious violations. I don't think he is a very good pick to be putting on such a position as on the Planning Commission. The second one is, the first violation was also, and the second violation also names Kathy Abernathy, who you're considering to put onto the Safety Board. And I think that it's, again, not a good look for the city to be taking people who have got those... have got those kind of violations that have been filed and are being investigated onto those type of boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, appointment to the Golden, or one appointment at large to the Golden Empire Transit District due to a term expiration on January 4, 2025. Two applications for appointment have been received from Fabian Gallardo and Carlos Bello.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. The council will vote electronically, and then the city clerk will announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the appointment.
Mayor Go, Carlos Bello received six votes and is the apparent winner.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the at-large appointment of Carlos Bello to the Golden Empire Transit District.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, 6B?
Item 6B, two appointments, wards five and six to the Planning Commission. Two applications for appointment were received from Allison Brand Oliver and Matthew Martin.
Thank you. These appointments are by Ward. Therefore, I will call on Councilmembers Coleman and Bashir Tosh to share their Planning Commission nominations for Ward five and for Ward six. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really my pleasure to nominate Allison Brand to the Planning Commission to succeed me. She's a fourth-generation Bakersfield person. She's a longtime family of developers. We happen to have her father, Bob Brandt, back here in the back, and her lovely mother, Charlotte, which is also my mother's name, so it was very nice to meet the two of you. Like I said, Allison is a fourth-generation Bakersfieldian. I can't say that word, but her family's been very instrumental in development in Bakersfield over the generations. She currently runs the company that she acquired from her family since about 2013. They're local home builders and developers, and so I think she'll add a lot of knowledge to the Planning Commission. A woman-owned business, it just all fits for me. So, I'm going to nominate Allison Brand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman.
Actually, I gotta clarify, Allison Brand Oliver, right? Okay.
And now, Councilmember Bashir Tosh, your nomination for Ward six.
Before I go over mine, I would also like to say Allison, I think is a great fit and is going to do great things. I chose Matthew Martin because when I was considering the position myself on the Planning Commission before mine, he's actually the gentleman that I spoke to the most about what that responsibility looks like in holding developers accountable, especially outside developers, and really looking out for the best interest of our community and keeping business as local as possible and doing right by the constituents. I think he's very common sense-driven, and I think that he'll be an asset when it comes to that. We lined up very similarly on Planning Commission ideas, and it's someone that I worked pretty closely with during my time on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, motion to approve the Ward five appointment to the Planning Commission, the Ward five and Ward six appointments to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now, 6C, please.
6C, five appointments to the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure Oversight Committee for Ward two, five, six, Mayor's Appointment, and the at-large appointment. Four applications for appointment have been received from Mary Madlin, Alan Avery, Kathy Abernathy, and Paul Matthew Harmon.
Thank you. These appointments are by Ward. Therefore, I will call on each council member to share their PSVS Oversight Committee nominations. And I'll start with Paul Matthew Harmon for the Mayor's PSVS Committee Member. He's an attorney with Bigger and Harmon, current president of the Kern County Bar Association, and a youth pastor for Crossway Baptist Church. And now, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm not prepared to make a nomination tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman for the nomination of Ward five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I propose nominating Alan Avery to PSVS Committee. Alan is the Chief Operating Officer at Kern Health Systems, a gentleman I've known for a long time as a competent and intelligent businessperson. I think he'll make a substantial contribution to the PSVS Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember. And now, Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Kathy Abernathy is seeking just a reappointment. I think that she did a really good job, definitely wasn't in the majority on voting through some of the issues, and I think that her accountability and dedication to really working hard for our constituents and for a safer community, I strongly support and recommend her and would like to see that happen.
Thank you. And now, Vice Mayor Cor for the motion. We're going to consider the at-large appointments separately, so we'll just do these first.
Motion to approve all Mayor and Ward appointments to PSVS.
Thank you. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And at this time, we've only received one application for the at-large appointment. Would any council member wish to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Councilmember Bashir Tosh?
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mary Madlin for the appointment at large.
And Councilman, and Vice Mayor?
I will make a motion to also forward the at-large appointment to take some time to gather and garner some more applicants since we've only received one, so that's my motion.
So, we always take the second motion first, so we're going to vote on the Vice Mayor's motion to forward. You have a motion?
To continue.
To continue, yeah. Is there, do we have anything? I don't see any other requests. Madam Clerk, you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent and Councilmembers Coleman and Bashir Tosh voting no.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please. And to all of you who chose and volunteered your service, thank you so much and congratulations on your appointments. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
2025 to 2027 Vice Mayor Appointments.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, in the above presentation, you will see the City Council Committee assignments for the next two years, and we'll go ahead and start. The first will be the Finance, Economic Development, and Jobs Committee, formerly called the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, with Councilmember Larry Coleman for Ward five, chairing that committee. Councilmember Eric Adias of Ward one will join him, along with Councilmember Andre Gonzalez of Ward two. Next committee, Personnel and Processes, formerly named Personnel. Councilmember Zach Bashir Tosh of Ward six will chair this committee, along with Councilmember Bob Smith from Ward four joining him, and Councilmember Ken Weir for Ward three. For our Laws and Legislation Committee, formerly named Legislation and Litigation, we have Councilmember Eric Adias of Ward one chairing our committee. Serving alongside Eric is Councilmember Andre Gonzalez for Ward two and Councilmember Ken Weir for Ward three. We have our Housing and Community Development Committee, which is a new title for housing, formerly known as Planning and Development. The purpose of this committee is to separate out our Housing and Homelessness Committee. I will be serving as Chair of this committee alongside Bob Smith, Councilmember Bob Smith, and Councilmember Larry Coleman. We will have a new standalone committee for homelessness chaired by Councilmember Andre Gonzalez. Councilmember Eric Adias and Councilmember Larry Coleman will serve alongside. And our Multimodal Transportation and Traffic Safety Committee, which was previously an ad hoc committee, will be chaired by Councilmember Bob Smith and serving alongside him are Councilmember Eric Adias and myself. Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods will be chaired by Councilmember Eric Adias. Councilmember Zach Bashir Tosh and Councilmember Larry Coleman will serve alongside Eric. And on our Water Board, we have Councilmember Bob Smith chairing this committee. Councilmember Andre Gonzalez and myself will serve alongside Councilmember Smith. We have additional agency representatives. The first being Kern Cog. Councilmember Smith will serve as, well as Councilmember Adias as his alternate. For Kern EDC, Councilmember Larry Coleman will serve. For LAFCO, Councilmember Gonzalez, and our alternate will be Councilmember Adias. For the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution and Control District, I didn't even memorize that, so thank you for everyone for the clues. Councilmember Adias will be serving, and our alternate is Councilmember Gonzalez. Our Kern River Groundwater Sustained Ability Agency will also continue to be served by Councilmember Smith. Solid Waste Management Advisory will be continued to be carried by Councilmember Weir. And here's a quick summary, including the Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, which the appointee is Ken Weir.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, just motion to ratify that?
I motion to approve the 2025 Council Committee Assignments.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you to my fellow councilmember colleagues for serving on our committees.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for Approval. A staff memorandum has been provided for item 7E4, Transmitting Correspondence, and for item 7E8, Correcting a Scrivener's Error.
Thank you. Colleagues, do any of you wish to recuse yourself? Seeing none, I've received two requests for consent calendar for separate consideration from Councilmember Smith, 7E4, and from Councilmember Gonzalez, 7E3 and 7I2. Is there anyone else on the council who wishes to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve items 7A through 7I excluding 7E3, 7I2, and 7E4. Those items are being pulled for separate consideration, and any corrections noted by our city clerk.
Thank you. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now, for separate consideration, we'll just take this in order of the agenda. So, Councilmember Gonzalez first for 7E3, please.
Thank you, Mayor. 7E3 tonight is in agreement with Golden Empire Affordable Housing, Inc., GHI, for the development of affordable housing at 1209 M Street. This is in Ward two. I'm very excited about this particular project, given that it helps advance our affordable housing numbers and goals. This funding is coming from Home ARP, which is a federal program, and we are actually allocating $738,363. Just wanted to clarify, that's the total amount of the project.
That is the total amount of the project. It's eight units, and so because it is eight units, it will not be subject to prevailing wage. I've also felt it was a very good project from that housing authority.
Wait, wait. So, it's two fourplexes then?
Right.
Eight units? Okay, perfect. So, that is $92,295 per unit.
Math is not my specialty.
I just did the math. I just did the math. And so, if that's true, that is the best deal in town when it comes to affordable housing units. And I applaud staff and GHI for being innovative and cost-effective. And I think it speaks to a point that we made several months ago, if not years ago, that these duplexes, fourplexes, triplexes are far cheaper to build and far more, well, far quicker to actually construct than some of these larger projects. And so, especially when you take a look at the per-unit cost. And I think Councilmember Smith in the past has made similar comments about, you know, focusing on some of these smaller duplex, triplex, fourplexes. And so, I want to thank staff for moving on this project, and I would just ask, I would love to see more of these, a lot more of these, over the next year so that we can continue to do things faster, cheaper, and get these projects up and running more quickly so we can help as many people as possible. Thank you so much. With that, I'll make the motion to adopt 7E3.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion was approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Smith, 7E4.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a down payment assistance program, and my motion would be to continue this. We continually raise the price of the home that we will provide down payment assistance for, and now that price is rising to $385,700. And I recently seen a three-bedroom home for sale on the east side with a garage for $325,000. I think that it's important that we incentivize affordable housing, which is a lower price as much as we can, and so I'm not sure that number needs to continue to rise as fast and as much as it is. So, I would like staff to look at that, and maybe we can have some more discussion about that, and would like to continue it. So, my motion is to continue that item.
You have a motion to continue? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And now, we'll go back to Councilmember Gonzalez for 7I2.
Thank you. 7I2 is an amendment to an agreement with City Guard, which is a private security company that provides supplemental eyes and ears for the Bakersfield Police Department in some of our target areas throughout the city. And so- And so I'm aware that Bakersfield Police Department really is strategic as to where they assign this private security. And I have to tell you, over the last six months to a year, I've been very impressed with the services that have been delivered by CityGuard. In fact, just a quick anecdote, I'm in this text group with several Oleander residents who are also so concerned about some of the issues related to transients and some of the property crime issues along Oak Street. And the actual head of CityGuard is also in that text group, along with Lieutenant Anderberg, who is amazing, by the way, chief. And they are on it all the time. Christmas Day, we got a text from an Oleander resident, and Bob from CityGuard was out there on Christmas morning. God bless him. And so they are really being proactive, and they're being responsive, and they're working in tandem with a lot of the service providers. So, you know, I think sometimes, you know, the city, we don't do a good enough job telling people how much we're actually doing when it comes to public safety. And many, many folks in the community often ask, what are you doing? What are you doing? And I'm more than happy to share with them all of the investments, all of the different strategies that we're doing, and how willing we are to look at ourselves and figure out new ways to get better, and always try to improve and enhance our response times and responses to issues that are affecting all of our neighborhoods throughout the entire city. So really happy about this amendment, really happy with CityGuard, and want to continue to encourage us all to think about innovative ways in which we can enhance our safety and security throughout the city of Bakersfield. So with that, I move to adopt 7I2.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Colleagues, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council colleagues, over the last few days, I'm sure we've all received calls and concerns related to some action that has been taken by federal agents in Border Patrol. Many of my constituents are in fear. They're concerned about their safety. Many of our undocumented residents, many of those community members that I've worked with for years, are important community members to the city of Bakersfield. They get up, go to work, they put their kids into school, they're raising bright, talented, beautiful children who are succeeding academically, professionally, economically. Many of our business, civic, and community leaders are products of undocumented individuals. I myself am a grandson of an undocumented immigrant. And so what's happening today and the terror that people are experiencing is just heartbreaking. But I want to just take a moment and share that the Bakersfield Police Department is in, from my understanding, is in no way involved in any of these enforcement actions. And I want to ask the chief, and I had a conversation with him earlier today, but I want him to, if you would, Chief Terry, in front of this council and in front of the public, clearly state what it is that the Bakersfield Police Department will do and will not do.
Councilmember Gonzalez, Mayor, and Council, the police department is certainly aware of the operations that are being conducted. We are not involved in any way directly or in a supportive role. In fact, state law prohibits any local resources to be used for immigration enforcement, and so we are not engaged or participating in these operations in any way. My message to the community is that we are focused on local issues and fulfilling our responsibilities to our community. And so if you are a victim of a crime or in need of police services, call us irrespective of an immigration status, and we will provide service.
So I appreciate you saying that, because many of our community members are victims of domestic violence, of violent crime, property crime, in all parts of the city, and they're fearful of calling for help. And that only furthers their experience in terms of being a victim. And so what you're saying here today, though, is that they should feel safe and secure calling for help from Bakersfield Police Department.
Absolutely.
And that they will not be asked from a police officer their citizenship status or their legal status within this country.
No.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I don't see any other requests to speak. Our thoughts and prayers are with the residents of the families impacted by the Southern California fires and our first responders who are currently fighting to stop the rapid spread while saving lives and property. Thank you to Assistant City Manager Anthony Valdez for reaching out to our colleagues in Southern California and just letting them know that we stand with them and we're ready to assist. So thank you very much. And to all of you, again, thank you for being here. Happy New Year. We look forward to a positive... Oh. We look forward to a positive 2025. And now, City Manager.
Just, Mayor, wanted to provide some additional information to the council for your awareness. We initially had sent three engines to help assist with the fires. We have now a fourth engine and crew, of course, assisting with those fires. We have been in direct communication with folks through their Emergency Operations Center to ask what other needs that they have. At this time, they're not requesting other assistance, but we do expect that there may be other, over time, there may be other law enforcement or others, you know, mutual aid assistance that they require. So we're staying vigilant and being available to support them. And we do have, again, four engines and teams supporting the fires currently from Bakersfield.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg. And some people have asked about financial assistance. I know I saw an email from CityServ saying that they would be receiving and funneling assistance to people. So thank you to all of you, and with that, we stand adjourned at 6:13.